My name is Nancy Sykes. And welcome to the East Hampton Public Schools School Committee Meeting of July 30th. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. I know you're out there, East Hampton. It's a beautiful night and I'm sure that you're all home by your TVs watching. So, so welcome. And we are very fortunate, of course, that we have our Channel 5, our public access station that records these meetings for you. And give thanks to Kathy, who is here tonight, and Tim, who is doing the controls. So, I think that, Nancy, do you have some announcements?
I do have some announcements. The next school committee meetings are August 20th, September 10th, and 24th. Teachers and staff will begin the new school year with three professional development days on August 27th, 28th, and 29th. Students' first day of school is Tuesday, September 3rd. Students in grades 10, 11, and 12 only will have a delayed opening. All other students will start school at the regular time. There's a half-day of school on Wednesday, September 18th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. And I also have two very nice announcements to make. I'm happy to announce that Meredith Belize has been appointed to the position of interim principal of White Brook Middle School. Meredith has been a health teacher at White Brook for many years and has also served as president of the Education, of the East Hampton Education Association. And we have just appointed Amy Napolitano as principal of Center Peppin. And Amy comes to us from Belcher Town where she has served as an assistant principal for the Swift River School for the last five years. And we're excited to have these two people join our staff.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Correspondents?
We do have. First one being from Leukemia and Lymphoma Society thanking Principal Rebelat for coordinating the Pennies for Patients program at White Brook Middle School. They raised $904.26 for research and patient services and to teach children about leukemia, philanthropy, teamwork, and helping those who are less fortunate. Second one is from the Smith College Museum of Art to Principal Orlando. And I'll just read this letter. It says, "Dear Principal Orlando, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge one of your excellent teachers. Julia Mack served this year as a member of her Teachers Advisory Committee. A group consists of, that consists of elementary and secondary school teachers from public, private, and charter schools throughout the region. Some of the teachers are art specialists and others are classroom teachers. The committee members advise the museum on school programs, including tours, teacher workshops, and special resources for educators. Their advice is critical to our ability to serve the school community in a meaningful way. This group of educators' experience and insights are especially helpful as the museum creates programs to link our exhibitions with school curricula. I'd like to recognize Julia for the time and energy put towards this committee. The committee meets after school a few times a year and often involves reading and evaluating educational materials or responding to surveys. Julia's enthusiastic participation and thoughtful contributions are valuable resources we rely upon." That is from the Associate Educator for School and Family Programs at the Smith College Museum of Art."
Very nice.
Excuse me. And that's it.
All right. And thank you, Ladonna. I think we have a gift, correct?
We do.
Yeah, I would move that we vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the donation of a monitor CPU and related system components to the district from a Mr. Lemay.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, as is our practice, we open the meeting up to public speak. So, all of you out there who are rushing to the mic to speak on a topic that you might like to speak to this evening that is not on our agenda, then now is your, your opportunity. Yes, Mr. Gunn?
I heard of a very interesting program at a, a regional public school in New Hampshire that has them licking the problem of snow days. And because I've gotten it secondhand, I just wanted to share it with you for research. They have something called a Blizzard Bag that the kids take home. And when school is called off, they have a set of assignments. So, they take the Blizzard Bag home early in the school year. They have a set of assignments, and they have a way of checking in through the online information system of the school. And the school system gets credit for a school day.
Wow, interesting.
And it helps control the end-of-year sort of push-out phenomenon that goes on a lot of places, so.
It's clearly not Massachusetts.
Yeah, I was going to say.
No, no, no. I imagine it would be very hard to have it happen, but since, you know.
It's interesting.
You know, they seem, they're, they're highly motivated about having a fixed end date. You know, the region that they're in, lots of kids, summer jobs.
I like the concept of the Blizzard Bag, don't you?
Right. I thought it was just, I just, you know.
I was thinking more of chocolates and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, that, that would be a good, I, who knows what's in the bag besides the work. But I think the kids like the fact that on a snowy day in February, they do a little bit of work and they're not in school on a steamy day in gym.
Excellent. Thanks, Peter. At this time, I believe that we have a presentation from Channel 5. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
I'm Kathy Lynch, the Station Manager at East Hampton Community Access Television. So, this spring, we launched a video contest in an effort to support the school system and offer some student input on school choice, because that tends to create funding problems. So, the, the students about, well, a handful of students responded with video submission about why they chose East Hampton High School. And in collaboration with Eileen Clavell and our staff, we chose a winner. So, I'd like to present a certificate to the winner. Also, it was a cash prize of $100, but the winner didn't want to wait until the meeting to get it. So, we have a certificate.
Thank you.
To Mr. Evan Haas, who will be leaving to go to college in the fall.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. And then we'd also like to show the video here to the panel. And just, my, our disclaimer is that the laptop that it's on can't do speakers and send the sound feed to the folks at home, so we thought maybe it's more important for the folks at home. So, we're going to open up the door to the control room.
Okay.
And get some residual sound and crank up the TV.
All right.
And maybe we should turn the light off in here.
All right, Evan.
There we go. And I just wanted to say that this project was in conjunction with the superintendent's office, and we were trying to find ways that we could collaborate. And so, I hope we can carry that forward into the next year.
Excellent. I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, yes.
Evan, where are you off to?
I'm going to Keene State College in New Hampshire.
Okay. Good luck to you.
Just drove by Keene State an hour ago.
And what's his major going to be?
It's an awesome city.
My major's going to be film.
Oh, very good. Very nice.
In addition to that, I also would like to present the school committee with two gifts that I will hand down. The first is a check for $290 to the Maple Street School from Channel 5. And the second is a check for $455 to the Center Peppin School. And this is also, this is another school in Channel 5 collaboration. It's the proceeds for the DVD sales of spring shows to parents, so.
Well, pay the way back. Thank you so much.
I'll ask you later to pay back.
So, okay.
We appreciate it, Kathy. Thank you. All right. We accept with gratitude.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay. Well, I don't know. We don't have any music to do, to go with the subcommittee reports, but. Finance Subcommittee?
No report.
Okay. Policy?
Second readings for three policies. The first one is policy ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of handicap. This replaces our current ACB policy on the same subject. It just more clearly lays out the role of the compliance coordinator and names the policy coordinator as a sped director for East Hampton.
Move to approve the new policy ACE?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is approved, the new policy of non-discrimination on the basis of handicap.
Second one is policy ACAB, sexual harassment. This would replace our current policy under the same heading, and it names a special education director as a coordinator of complaints. And versus the old policy, more clearly explains the complaint process.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor of accepting the new policy ACAB on sexual harassment? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is accepted.
And the third one is policy JRA-R, student records to replace, oh, I had all of those out. Replace our current policies JO, JO-R, and JOA to bring our handbook up to date with current regulations and procedures.
Good.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor of accepting the new student handbook policy?
Aye.
So, accepted. Okay. Thank you, policy.
And then I do want to say afterwards, if the policy's up, committee could just meet quickly to pin down a date for our next meeting to discuss the wellness policy.
Okay. All right. Any report from CES?
No, no report.
Okay. Are there any other discussions that need to come forward at this time? Then I will turn it over.
Actually, Nancy, sorry. I just wanted to make a plug. I know that the collaborative sponsors, the Teaching American History Program that I believe concluded this week, and the education director of that is East Hampton's Kelly Brown. So, and I know that they had a waiting list of dozens of, of people. I went to the opening and I was doing a different program this month, and so wasn't able to continue it. But I, you know, there's another place where East Hampton is famous for outstanding professional work, so.
Well, thanks, Peter. And thanks to Kelly. Superintendent Follinsby?
Yes, I just wanted to give the committee an update on our outreach advisory committee and what we've been doing this year and what the plans are for next year. We currently have 19 members of the committee, parents and community members. And sometimes all of them are there, sometimes some are there, but we have a really good amount of people coming to every meeting. We have had, let's see, one, two, three, five meetings this year, starting in January. Our last meeting was July 10th. And the areas of advocacy that were identified by the committee were data collection, getting information about the district that we could use in positive ways, a marketing plan for marketing all of the positives of our, our school district, a group interested in looking at facilities, school ambassadors, appointed ambassadors at each school to help parents feel welcome and, and show them the school from a parent's perspective, and state advocacy, trying to work with our state representatives on some of the issues that, that we find challenging. We also have talked about the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the high school in the fall and what that will look like, and the participation of these members in that, in that ceremony.
Is there a date certain on that? I apologize. I know I shouldn't know.
No, there is not yet. That's something that we need to determine this summer. We do have one group that's working on, or one, one of our members, working on making connections with the arts community. And we have another one that's looking at, let's see, what was my next? Oh, developing the customer service approach at our, in our schools. I've included notes from the last meeting, July 10th, and you can see the areas highlighted in red were some areas that the committee felt they wanted to work on this year. A parent fair was suggested, an opportunity for parents to get to know our schools and, and the different ways that they could become involved in our schools. The parent ambassadors that I talked about, the marketing flyers, newspaper, and other media highlighting the strengths of the East Hampton Public Schools educational program. And again, the, the ribbon-cutting ceremony, those were immediate on our list. The next meeting will be September 16th at 6:30 PM here at 50 Payson, and we welcome anyone who would be interested in joining us to attend the meeting or get in touch with me if you're just interested in finding out more about it. Deb Loosney has been on our committee, I think, every meeting. Almost. And Deb, I don't know if you wanted to say anything else about the committee or, or.
No, I just said it's very exciting, and there's a lot of energy and enthusiasm in the room, and it seems like there's far too many projects than there's time for, but there's just a lot of people that are really enthusiastic about doing something to affect positive change in one way or another and enhance our school district and, or get the word out about how special we are. So, it's, it's a pretty exciting group with lots to do.
And Laura's been there as well, one meeting. But we're always happy for anyone to join any meetings that they can. And, yeah, it seems to be a really strong, positive energy there. We do also have two city councilors who've attended our meetings from time to time. So, we're excited about this collaboration.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about something that came up in the last meeting as part of the presentation from the college counseling folks?
Mm-hmm.
I was just curious, as an aside, they made reference to the Navient system and its expense.
Uh-huh.
And I, I don't, can we task them to come back to you with a proposal for how much it would cost?
Specifics?
To implement that? When I was reading through this, it sort of struck me as, as a piece that would fit with, with outreach to prospective families to know that our, our college counseling not only has, the guidance staff, excuse me, not only has outstanding people, but working really hard on behalf of great students, but that we are exploring the adoption of that, of that system. And I think it's important for people in East Hampton to understand why that kind of ongoing expense is part of the new reality.
Exactly. I'd be happy to pursue that for you, Peter.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, I don't know, but do you think this might be record-breaking history here? We are now going to go into our matters for action. And I only am saying record-breaking history because it is now 7:20.
Don't jinx it, Nancy.
Okay. Okay. All right. How about our minutes from June 18th?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2013, of the school committee meeting with the stipulation to hold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
Second. All those in favor of accepting, accepting the minutes of the regular session, June 18th, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are accepted as written.
And one more.
One more, yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the June 18th, 2013 Superintendent Evaluation Work Session.
Second. All those in favor of accepting those minutes as written? Aye?
Aye.
Approved.
Epstein?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, forgot that. And Epstein. Payroll.
Move to approve the school payroll dated June 27, 2013, in the amount of $994,424.52.
Second. It has been moved to approve the school board payroll dated June 27th, 2013, in the amount of $994,424.52. All those in favor of approving this payroll?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 27, 2013, in the amount of $284,215.25.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization dated June 27th, 2013, in the amount of $284,215.25. All those in favor?
Aye.
A counts payable is paid. Approved.
Move to approve the school payroll dated July 11th, 2013, in the amount of $304,793.28.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the payroll dated July 11th, 2013, in the amount of $304,793.28. All approve?
Aye.
Aye? It is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 30, 2013, in the amount of $544,397.3.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization dated June 30th, 2013, in the amount of $544,397.3. All approve? Say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
More?
More?
Move to approve the school payroll dated July 25th, 2013, in the amount of $281,442.1.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the school payroll dated July 25, 2013, in the amount of $281,442.1. All those who approve?
Aye.
It is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated August 1st, 2013, in the amount of $188,069.55.
Second. Accounts payable? It has been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated August 1st, 2013, in the amount of $188,069.55. All those who approve? Say aye.
Aye.
I believe we've done it.
Can I just make a note on that? I've been coming, as Lori has, in to do the review, and unfortunately, the most recent time, the job that I was working in Amherst, I was out of town by eight and not back in town until after five, so I wasn't able to do the most recent cycle. I assume that didn't pull this up, but I anticipate that I will probably be away also in August, so I didn't know if another member of the school committee might be available and just to share the information here, to come in. It's really easy. You come in, you read through the.
Right.
The payroll and if the, the accounts, and if, you know, you get to ask questions about any items there that stand out to you. So, my apologies for not being able to do the last cycle, but if someone can be prepared to do the one in August, that would be great.
She, she asks often, and I come in when needed to. And I know this time around, she sent out a message, but then she pulled it back and said that the meeting tonight would be sufficient and sufficient time, so we didn't need to go in.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. I believe that we have a request from White Brook.
We have actually our Special Education Director, Ann Knapp, and that's why I removed myself for a few moments, looking for her, because I didn't see her in the audience, but she was hiding behind the podium.
I was hiding, sorry.
So, she's going to explain to you the request for these new positions.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Federal, the federal government and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts mandate that we offer a free and appropriate public education to all students. The regulations ensuring that we follow this mandate insist that we, that special education teams develop IEPs that enable students to have the supports and specially-designed instruction that they need to access the curriculum. The needs of our students are becoming more complex and wider-ranging. Because of those needs, I am requesting the following positions. One, a special education preschool paraprofessional to meet the needs of the increased number and needs of the students being referred to our preschool program. Two, a special education teacher to be split between Grade 2 at Maple School in the mornings and White Brook Middle School in the afternoons. White Brook Middle School has the highest amount of service delivery hours of any school in the district. To ensure that IEP goals and objectives and service delivery are being met, I'm further requesting two special education paraprofessionals for White Brook Middle School. Any questions?
Well, and I think it's important to, and maybe you've said this already, Ann, but the requests for these positions are in order to fulfill the requirements of the IEPs for these students that we currently are not able to fill with our, our current staff.
Yes. And it becomes, as the students move up to the middle school, we find that that bump from the elementary level to the demands of the middle school level exponentially increase the needs they have for special education support. You see the bump in third grade, and then you see the bump again as children move into the middle school. So, that really explains why we have so many more service delivery hours at the middle school level. If you look at it, it then starts again to drop off more at the high school level. So, to really fulfill these needs, special education teams write IEPs. I, as the special education director, provide guidance around regulation. I cannot, again, by regulation, override the decision of a special education team. That's against the law.
Okay.
So, what's the cost?
Well, we've got three paraprofessionals, so $45,000, and a special education teacher. I don't know, do you, Ann, do you know what salary step that teacher?
He would be Masters 1.
And Sue, do you have that figure? Forty-eight, I was thinking it was about that.
Okay, 93.
93,000, is that what you think it is?
It's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
This is the first time that we've looked at cost?
No, we've looked at costs right along.
And where do you propose that this will come from in the budget that you say we've got to cut everywhere else from? Just curious.
Well, in, in some of our positions, we've lost some teachers who were veteran teachers, so the new teachers coming in are coming in a lower salary scale. We also have replaced experienced administrators with new positions, so there's a differential.
You're going to fund this from salary creep?
Through that, and if we need to, through choice.
We've also been able to move to contracts that were formerly funded by the LEA into the 240.
What's the LEA?
The local education associate.
Local monies.
Local monies. That were moved into the 240 grant by our elimination of the contracts with May and Levine.
I have a question, just for clarification. I know we recently did kind of a revamping of the services, especially at the elementary level. So, are these needs that you're seeing, have these kind of come about as the, the most recent round of IEP meetings were scheduled, and then the needs were determined in the spring? And so, this is a.
And so this is kind of a new insight?
Yes. Especially at the elementary level. We're finding the students who are moving in are needier. And the students that are being referred into the system from early intervention are needier. Some of the students that would have been referred from early intervention before, who had less needs, are not being referred because the quality of service at early intervention is taking them out of the pool.
So what we are seeing is that, you know, we can't determine what special education needs students will come to us with, who are coming newly into our schools. And I believe that some of these, or one of these positions at least, was in response to that.
Yep. Yeah.
Additionally, the Maple, the special education teacher that we're proposing is split between Maple and Whitebrook. I understand the dramatic need at the middle school. What is going on at Maple specifically that requires?
We have some students with complex needs that require expertise in augmentative communication systems, behavioral, that are more academically linked than what Judy Avril's program provides.
So this special ed teacher would be working with the teachers and administrators to demonstrate defined strategies?
As well as students.
Okay.
As well as students.
Okay.
Peter?
Could you just clarify what you said before? Because I think folks, I'm curious, but I think other folks would be curious too, about the decision as to what the needs are and who makes that final decision? Because what I heard you say before is, the committee within the school makes a decision that says, we need X amount more based on the IEPs.
Now, what the school, what IEP teams do
Right.
is they look at each individual child's needs and propose the services and supports they need to access the curriculum. My job is to take all of that information from across the district and determine what we need as far as staffing and equipment to fulfill those needs.
So, Ann, if I can, this is my understanding, Peter. Essentially, an IEP team is comprised of the teachers, the special ed team, the parents. Annually, they sit down, they meet, they hash out what goals have we met, what goals are we falling short, what are the new issues that are arising? They formulate that plan. That plan gets sent to Ann, who then compiles all of the students' plans and tries to streamline the services. And it looks like this most recent round of spring IEP meetings
I'd say from early winter on, we've been seeing a gradual increase in the amounts of needs that we've, and people have been working very hard to put, you know, Band-Aids on what they can. But the more we got into the school year, the more the needs became more complex, the more kids we had that moved in that had really complex needs, is where it got to a point of critical mass, where we had to rebalance the scales.
Yeah, I think I understand that process. I think the, you know, Mike's question about the cost, and Nancy, your outlining of the possible ways that we can cover the cost sound as though it works for a year. But again, and I'm sorry, maybe I'm just being academic about this at some level, but I think the public needs to understand the way this process unfolds, because there's not, in effect, a way that we can say no to this. If we thought that was wise to say no, without the potential for legal repercussions, right?
Absolutely.
And I think that this is one of the incredibly important and difficult dynamics in public education that a lot of people don't understand. And I think a lot of people, I don't know whether I can say I understand their frustration with it, but, you know, one of the drivers of cost is people make a determination through the diligent work of these educators who are working with these children who have these special needs, and here it comes. Now, if we weren't in a situation where we could save through salary transfers based on the seniority and tenure of the people who are leaving and the people that we're hiring, we'd be looking at taking this out of some other school service. And I think that's
Or out of our choice funds.
Or out of our choice, but at some point, the choice, right, I mean, you know, that we would have, might want to have taken that money out of the choice funds to fill in one of the other cuts that we've had to make. So I think the, where it comes from ultimately is other school services absent increased funding for needs like these. And this is a state requirement, we've talked about this before, this is a state requirement, that is there reimbursement from the state for any of these expenses?
There is through, for out-of-district students and for students whose in-district services are over forty-one thousand dollars a year. We receive seventy-five percent of any amount over forty-one thousand dollars of year, a year. Also, we receive through the two forty grant, money to maintain level of services, but I have to tell you that this year, that amount was cut. And this year, last year, the base amount for circuit breaker was approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars. This year, it was forty-one thousand dollars, which made the amount we are receiving back from circuit breaker lower.
Okay. And again, I know that, Nancy, what you said before about our pace, and I'm sorry to persist with this, but if the student, the individual student doesn't trip the forty-thousand dollar, forty-one thousand dollar number, which, and it sounds as though through very effective work, in fact, if we're serving more than three students out of this total amount, no one of them necessarily is going to trip that. You can have all of these increased costs without any money coming back, or very little money coming back from the state. So we have, we have a understandably valid and important mandate in terms of what we do, but if the pot of money doesn't grow, what we do to provide services here becomes less services that we can provide somewhere else. And we end up with an intramural conflict within the community that we want to avoid.
Can I just, I just, for my own edification, I'd like to clarify this. I don't believe we should be approaching this as this is money we have to spend while we're holding our noses. It's my understanding and experience that by spending this money and providing these services, it's not just for the benefit of the needy children and the children with the special needs. This is the benefit for the population at large. This makes the classroom run more smoothly. It allows all the children in the classroom to access the curriculum more effectively, and allows the teachers to function more effectively. So I don't think that nitpicking the ninety-three thousand dollars, it's irrelevant. We legally have to do it, and I think it benefits the population at large.
I also think that by requesting this ninety-three thousand dollars, what we're also able to do is to provide more services within the district. And therefore, reducing the amount of students we have to send out at a minimum of thirty-seven thousand dollars a placement to an out-of-district placement, the cost of which we would completely bear.
Oh, I get that it makes economic sense, and I'm not holding my nose. What I'm saying is that, as I understand the driver, that there are more documented, needier students, and we are responding appropriately to them. And that's going to produce an educational benefit. But doing so effectively means that ultimately, there may be something else that we can't do, and it's part of why, you know, I keep going back and replaying in my head the discussion about the override that failed in the community. And one of the pieces of information that I think is important to have out there is that this is a factor that explains why increased funding for the schools makes sense.
Yes, agree.
And I raised the question of cost because, first of all, no one offered it. And I'm sorry, but I think I'm the only one to ever ask those questions, and it needs to be asked.
And it's a perfectly appropriate question. I think that, you know, we didn't put that front and center because we knew we had to cover these costs somehow in our budget. And so, Ann does a really excellent job of looking at the needs of our students and thinking about how we're going to do that best with the budget we have. We work together, you know, in terms of meeting the needs of our students, which is what we want to do. We want to meet the needs of all of our students in our schools. But with limited resources in our school district, it makes everything a little more challenging. So I think Ann's done an excellent job of looking at the needs and trying to provide the services for those needs in, as cost-effective a way as possible. And believe me, we had many conversations about how to do this, so we're providing quality services in a cost-effective way. And, you know, what we're putting forth to you tonight is that, and it also meets our legal requirements, which, you know, we are wanting to do as well as obligated to do.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the request for staffing increase by the Special Education Department? Or do we need to split this up into the two separate? Okay. I move to accept the new moderate special education teacher request from Maple and Whitebrook Middle School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes.
Yep. Next one?
Yes, please.
I move to accept the new special education paraprofessional request, two of which at Whitebrook and one at Maple School.
Second.
All those in favor of this request? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Request is granted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I hear no further business. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.